Today is October 29th, 2024. It is 4:02 PM. This is a Bluff Town Council meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jennifer Davila.
Luann Hook.
Britt Hornsby.
Ann Lekkonen.
Erin Nelson, Zerria's Town Manager.
So first, we have the approval of the Bluff Town Council Work Session Minutes of October 8th, 2024. Has everybody received those, read them? And are there any changes or modifications, points of discussion?
There's on, I don't know, I haven't pulled up here yet, but I don't know if it's on the work session or the regular, but it was about the dark sky question, and I don't know if it matters, but I wasn't the one that asked about it. Do you know which one it is?
I...
Okay. Anyway, I don't know who asked, like, if it was gonna be under the beak, or...
Yeah, so I asked, and I do think that I had sent that in my list to Melanie of corrections for that, and I think it was the eighth. I think it was the one on the eighth.
That's the work session?
Yeah.
It's uncorrected.
It was in my list, I don't know if it was...
Yeah, no.
Okay, yeah.
It's corrected?
Yeah.
Okay, see. So, a motion to approve Bluff Town Council Work Session Minutes of October 8th, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Approval of Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes of October 15th, 2024. Has everybody received those? And are there any changes, corrections, points of discussion?
Alright, motion to approve Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes of October 15th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then approval of the Bluff Town Council and the Bluff Planning is on a joint work session meeting minutes. Same question, has everybody received them, read them? And are there any changes or modifications, points of discussion?
I wasn't able to make this one, so I'm gonna stay. So it's somebody else's question.
I motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Then all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I'll stay.
If this is public comment, there will be a three-minute time limit for anyone wishing to make a public comment. If you exceed the three-minute time limit without permission, meeting controller will mute you. Put your name in the chat box or raise the hand icon if you wish to make a public comment. It is 4:05, and we do not have anyone in the audience in person.
I haven't seen anyone indicate, I also didn't, I wasn't sharing my screen with the usual message, so maybe just give it a couple seconds for people. If they want to make a comment, they can raise their hand or put their name in that chat box now.
Wait a minute then.
I'm not seeing anyone indicating that they'd like to make a comment at this time, so I'll go ahead and turn off the messages, the message option.
Then we'll move to number one, which is update and discussion of the IT services. Erin?
So, I have reached out to all of the providers that I had gotten quotes from, including our current IT service provider. And after a lot of comparison, and also I did get some additional information from Galaxy IT, in which their CEO had listened in on, has listened in on multiple of our meetings and, you know, understood that I had some concerns about that onboarding cost being so high. He actually wrote back and decreased that onboarding to something that I think is much more reasonable, which is just $1,500. That would also include the migration of our domain to the .gov, so they would do that at no cost. And then this includes them coming down in person, no travel fee for this onboarding, or I should say, everything is included in this updated quote for onboarding, which I think makes it much more reasonable. And when I ran the numbers and compared it out, you know, for the next 12 months, they are going to be our most cost-effective option, because I also had a pretty long conversation with Netforce, who've got a sales rep from Netforce. And in that discussion, there's additional items that I thought would be really beneficial, that would kind of give us like an apples-to-apples comparison of what we were asking of the other folks I'd gotten quotes from, which would include like additional security monitoring and some just peace of mind with backups. And when they gave us a new quote to kind of get everything up to a level comparison field, you all should see this updated quote from Netforce in your agenda packet, but I was, I was really disappointed with what they're able to offer and what they've been offering versus what I'm hearing from Galaxy IT. I know we had talked about Cinch IT a lot, and it was, it would be beneficial to have someone just two hours up the road, but I did kind of have to hunt them down to even get a written quote. He was very communicative when I was on the phone with him, which was nice, but I think that one of our biggest concerns with Netforce right now is the level of customer care and service. And I will tell you, this guy from Galaxy has called me twice a week, every week, since I reached out to him, and has like sent me, "Hey, what else can we do to earn your business? It's really important to us." And when I had called a couple weeks ago, I just had, you know, a couple questions after one of our meetings, I didn't reach him, but one of his other support, and this particular individual also knew exactly what was going on with our account, could answer my questions just to the same level, and then ensured that the main guy I'd been talking to also followed up with me to make sure everything was addressed. So I felt very strongly that they would be able to help from the customer service standpoint. And again, after going back to Netforce and explaining the level of service that I wanted to be at and the level of security I wanted to be at, their quote is coming in higher, certainly higher than what we have been paying, and just probably is not, not gonna be a good fit. I was also concerned with Netforce that, you know, they know we're a governmental entity, and there were elements of their proposal, their initial proposal, that I was disappointed that they didn't even include or didn't think that we needed. And, you know, I know we're a smaller entity, but, you know, it is their job to make sure that we're secure and protected. And so I really appreciated the open conversation with Galaxy wherein, you know, he said, you know, "It is the small companies or governments that, that are targeted for, for attacks." So I, I would recommend, after going through all of this, that we, we do go ahead and change providers. I would also recommend, if you haven't already, I do want you to look at the quotes and compare dollar to dollar, but for the next 12 months, including a shift, and, including a shift, including the onboarding costs that would be incurred by going to Galaxy IT, they will still be the most cost-effective option over a 12-month span. I think, no matter what we're looking at, we can always assume that there might be increases with any of these folks, you know, costs are just getting more expensive, but I felt very, I was really impressed with the level of communication and commitment, making sure that, you know, they were actively following up as opposed to me having to go out and draw stuff out. So, I know it is not on the agenda today to vote, but whenever we're able to get to that point, I would recommend it. When I talked to Galaxy IT, they indicated that if they got approval, they could be down as early as next week to start getting the transition done. So I really appreciated that, too, that they understood the timeliness of getting this done before the end of the year, and then getting that domain change done, too.
Where's Galaxy from, is it?
So they're on the Wasatch Front. That is definitely something when we're looking through, and I, the, the, I did a little bit different agenda packet today where I was attaching emails, and you can go and open the email, hopefully you can open the email. But he's got a link, and you can go in, and it like does all these dropdowns as exactly what's included. So what's included for them is, it is unlimited remote support. It is going to be during kind of regular office hours, but they do have a 24-hour auction that we would, you know, have to pay like an after-hours cost. I don't think that's an issue, as long as we all understand that, you know, during regular working hours, we're being handled. Now, if there was some major issue and the network goes down, or there's other stuff going on, they're gonna jump right on it, and we'll still have coverage there. If they need to come down and do anything in person, then we are billed for the travel. It's an hourly rate, which is the same as like an onsite rate, which is 195, which is high. But in talking to him today, he brought up a really good point, that we are at the point where our devices are here, we've got the system set up there. What he said, he said, "If you need someone onsite, it's a bigger, like, your IT company isn't doing their job appropriately from the beginning, 'cause so much of it can be handled remotely," that they can get into each of these devices very easily. He said, "If you, if you think that you're gonna be having to, if you think you need people onsite, or have needed people onsite regularly, either A, you're doing a big project, which you'll incur the cost anyway, or B, they have not done the proper work on the backend." And just in speaking with him, I was impressed, 'cause I, I mean, again, he identified all of these other things that we're not currently getting from a security standpoint, that he's planning to implement on day one, that should help us. So, yes, they are, they are a little ways away. I, just in general, I was impressed with the pricing plan. I think it makes a lot more sense than what we're currently paying for, or would have to à la carte through Netforce. I do think that most of our stuff can be handled remotely.
So I haven't had a computer issue yet, but like, you did. And so when you have a computer issue, does it have to go to the, so I guess that would be my only thing. So if you do have a device issue, does it get, how's that?
Well, I think you could easily throw it in a box and have UPS pick it up and get it up there by the next day, you know? I mean, honestly, when we had to run my computer over to Netforce, and then they didn't even get back to me about, when they called two weeks later to see what the problem was with my computer, I was like, "Well, since you had it for last week, I don't think there is a problem anymore." But, you know, I mean, it's, I think, I think with a lot of, I'm learning that with a lot of stuff, it's important to take advantage of the remote things, and we just have to trust that, yes, they can get in and fix a lot of it.
Yeah.
With us sitting in our, in our...
I think no matter, yeah, and I think no matter what, when we make the change, 'cause I think in talking to Netforce this week, it's not if, it is when. Like, I, I am kind of ready to move away, given that they haven't been proactive in sensing kind of our needs. And again, like, that's why we're hiring a third party, is because I don't know our needs. I know a lot of them, but I do, I want the consultant, the specialist, to tell us what I need. But when we move away from them, no matter who ends up coming down, like, yeah, when they're here in person, we're gonna take advantage of what they can do in person. The real issue would become if we do have a really big project. So if we're trying to get the CCC online, or we were somehow going to do a whole bunch of reconfiguration in the offices, like, that is an expensive project, and you all saw that in the costs, or the council, the first council saw that in the costs of installing this equipment here. I mean, that, that was a $20,000 project. You're gonna rack those up no matter what, no matter who's coming down. So if we felt fairly confident that A, most of our stuff could be handled Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, or whatever the close thing is there, or you can wait till the next day, that we trust that they're gonna put on all of the security backend stuff and be monitoring things regularly, then in the off chance that we did have some computer go kaput, then I do agree, I think mail it in, and, or, you know, it is the next time someone's going up. Clearly, the biggest issue is we just don't want the device to be at risk and infecting anything else. So in that case, clearly, they're gonna jump on and say, "Turn the device off, turn all your other devices off," and we'll advise. I think that is a worst-case scenario, but I'm glad you all are thinking of it. I think...
I don't think we're thinking of it.
I think, given what they're offering, it makes a lot of sense to make the change. The other thing to think about, too, is that these devices are kind of aging out. This company will advise us on whether, any of these companies would advise us on whether these devices are or are not gonna be able to take the next upgrade for Windows. If they aren't, then we'll all need new computers. The good news is they'll be faster. They would, whatever company it is, is gonna work on computers, send them down, ship them down, we'll pick them up, something like that. It would be a good thing if we got new computers. If we don't get new computers, then when they come down and do the initial consultation, implementation stuff, we'll make sure that they're as up-to-date as possible to get us through, you know, the next round of upgrades, or of Windows updates. So I feel pretty confident. I, you know, certainly want you guys to look at the numbers and look at what we'd be incurring. And again, I think it makes sense to look at it on the, the annual basis for the next 12 months. And then I, I should've asked Trevor this. I don't believe that they are looking for a annual contract. I think it is month-to-month, and I believe this is the firm that told me...
I remember reading something in one of them that said month-to-month basis.
Yeah, I think these guys are a month-to-month, because their whole premise is, "It is our job to earn your business every single month." And I think that's these guys. So, that's my recommendation. I would recommend that if it's not about today, then as quickly as possible, and then we can start getting everything rolled over. I do think it makes sense to kind of tell Netforce that we are not interested in moving forward with them, because, you know, it just, we're not gonna sign the contract, and they, they did want us to sign that annual contract again. So I'm happy to have that conversation with them, if that's kind of the consensus, or if you want me to wait until we have an official vote to move over, I can do that, too.
I'm in favor of just having a consensus that we haven't been happy with Netforce. They haven't provided what we need. We don't have adequate security. And we should just let them know now that we're finding another provider, regardless of who we end up with.
Yeah, 'cause they will have to do stuff on the backend to prepare for the transition. And I think, I think that is fair, that they know that, that they don't continue to spend time on our, you know, they need to provide enough security until we transition. But I was really disappointed when I was talking to them, because, you know, it had always kind of been this like underlying, "Well, they're doing backups, they're doing backups, they're doing backups." No, they're backing up email, which is important, and they're backing up what's on the shared drive. And I can guarantee, only two of us at this table are backing things up to the shared drive right now, which is, which is understandable, 'cause none of the rest of you were trained on it. No one taught you how to do it, and that's not your fault. So that's alright, IT service providers' fault if they say that they're gonna be doing a backup on just that.
Well, the other thing is if we're being told that there's a backup, and some of us are not computer geeks, yeah. If I made an assumption that the backup was happening, that I didn't have to be trained to learn how to do a backup myself, I'm particularly just pleased with this outcome. What we can do, I was going to make the suggestion in other, but I'll do it right now, is not cancel the November 5th meeting, just keep it out there, so that we don't cancel and then have to reinstate it. But we could just do a virtual call-in and vote on this issue on the 5th, if there's nothing else to, to, that we have to deal with. And that would be my suggestion, we just hold that 5th, and then, would that, if that be in a week?
As much as I don't wanna see you guys, no, I think it would be nice to have a full two months for them to make the transition, and really, I mean, I was gonna say, it's really, like, they have five to six weeks to get it done before we, you know, are all kind of...
And they've done some other municipalities?
These guys, okay, so no, so that was one of my questions to them. So they don't have any current municipalities, however, they have a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, they have clients right now, and they can't give me names, which is a good sign, that they don't call, you know, they don't name, but they have clients who have governmental contracts, which actually probably have even higher security needs than we have. And they have, they've never lost a client, is pretty much what they've told me. They're, they're, they're smaller, but they have very, like I said, yeah, I was impressed with the level of communication, and they were really on top of it, so.
Yeah, and the only, the only drawback to not having a contract is we could have a price increase.
I agree.
But...
I agree. I, that is my concern as well, 'cause then, yeah, we're back in square one and trying to find someone else, and I hope...
If they really raised it.
Yeah, I've, I've thought about that, too, and I was looking at, like, what would be their usual rate, 'cause the rate that they did provide us is, is very competitive. And I, yeah, I mean, just on, on the cover page there, like, yeah, if we were to jump up to that initial rate, that, that would be a pain in the pocket. But I, I do think that we're not getting the service meeting now. I do think that they can probably get us to the point where we feel secure and covered, and then, you know, we'll just need to ensure that we keep an eye on those costs, and even an eye on the hourly costs, you know, if we're incurring things that are not part of this package, you know, those hourly rates add up really fast. So I am committed to keeping an eye on those as well. Yeah, clearly not opposed to going out and finding another company if we're not happy with the service we're being provided.
Well, if we're not happy with the current service, we've gotta do something, and it's just a given.
And I, I like that he really, he did tailor it to our needs. Cinch, while they do have a very comprehensive package, it's just so far outside of our price range, it just didn't really make a whole lot. And we could, we could go through and slash and do this stuff, but I appreciated that Galaxy, like, really tailored into, and I think he really listened to our needs.
Well, I think it's important that we are not necessarily the ones who are going in and slashing this, because, I mean, I personally know that, well, I don't know if we really need that or not, and theoretically, they would know, you know, it's like, it's like dealing with an insurance agent, you know? It's like, oh, do I need to have coverage on this, because you're not going to cover my car anyway? So, I mean, that's, that's kind of how I, I see it, is let them earn, earn your, earn your business.
And I think the comparison to insurance is very astute, 'cause I was lamenting to Ann, I'm like, "They're all so expensive," and it's insurance, but if something goes wrong, that they'll take care of it for us.
One of our options is to have an in-house person in, we don't have that option, and a lot of the big towns do, so they don't have these companies.
Exactly. That's, that's actually a really good point, too. I, I don't discredit any of these companies for not having municipal clients, because you're absolutely right, the ones that actually really need it. They, they pay for it constantly, we don't have...
Well, it's kind of embarrassing when you're at a fair, so to speak, 'cause that's what I feel like I was at, and your vendors, like, "Oh, don't you know that you're supposed to be switched to this?" And I was like, "Well, yes, but no, our IT company hasn't done it yet." I think it might be kind of good to stay with a Utah-based thing, who maybe stays more up on the regulations and things like that, that you're supposed to be doing, whereas a Colorado-based company doesn't stay up with those things, I would say.
That's a good call, yeah. Cool. Well, not to steal your time next week, but I, I do think it would be good to move it along, so.
And we're, I'm not anticipating that much will happen between now and the, the work session, the next, the following week, so I think we could just keep it, hopefully to this one item, and weigh in and do a vote.
And my apologies to everyone, if I thought we'd be ready for a vote, I would've told them to put it on there, but I didn't think I was gonna have the amount of information that I got from Netforce that would really kick this, and, "Let's go." My apologies.
No, that, that's not a problem at all, so I think we just do it that way unless someone's opposed to, with like a five-minute following.
And I think even if somebody's not available, we have, I feel like we have a consensus, even if so, as long as we get a quorum.
Especially if we can do it virtually. Do we really think that there's gonna be anything burning at 4 o'clock on a Tuesday afternoon, watching it?
I, I would really hope not, but...
Ann, you can dial in, yeah.
I don't know where I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in a funk. And I think number two, Britt, did you give a report on the strategic planning last week?
No, we didn't have it.
Okay, I looked at that.
We didn't have a meeting last week.
Okay, number two then, report on Bluff Water, work strategic planning meeting. So I'll turn this over to Britt and Jen.
Yes, Linda, and we, we had a, yeah, so the three of us were at the meeting with BWW, it was everybody but Brand, right? And then...
So Brand hard.
Brand hard, sorry, yes, I forget, we have to, yes, Brand hard. And, and, and we had Rusty from town, Melissa Aggie wasn't able to make it. So, but I thought it was a really good first meeting. We spent, you know, did the normal introduction thing, would kicking something like this off, and then we spent a significant amount of time talking about the succession plan. And I thought it was a good first meeting to get things going. I mean, I think a lot of the stuff that we as a body are gonna have to deal with will probably come in the third meeting, when it's more about that transition to town and stuff like that, and what that might look like. But it was interesting to hear, it was, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, there's, it sounds like they're, they have a need for a succession plan, obviously, to find, to get everything Marx has down, SOPs or whatever, and something somebody could pick up. But then they also have, it sounds like a need for an incident plan, I mean, for if a specific thing went wrong in town, as opposed to just generally the SOPs for all the water issues. So we talked about that for a while as well.
I thought it was good, because I thought it kind of really fell in line with the strategic plan that we as a town have as, as a paper, you know? This, these are the things that need to be developed to continue to, to move forward, the water agency, whoever, you know, I mean, whoever ends up doing it, these are all steps that need to happen, and things that the water, that, well, that any, any water entity needs to follow and be aware of, and things like that, just getting those written down in a document that you can hand to somebody, "Okay, here's your role," you know? So I thought it was good in, in getting, hopefully, a list of, of those things to generate and move with.
So the purpose of this was to create infrastructure, not flesh out infrastructure. I mean, people had a lot of ideas and a lot of input. The one thing that came out of it was developing a table of contents for the things that, all the information that Britt and Jen are talking about, you know, where are the lines, what are the finances, what are the budget? I mean, there's a ton of information. So, the, when we left, Marx asked what the town wanted them to do. And I, with their strategic plan. And one other thing, Gary said he, he did a strategic plan for the fire station, which I thought was great. I mean, we, you know, don't know anything about it, but they've got it, so that's great. So, but like Jen just said, what we want them, I mean, our idea going forward is what's in, probably some of it is in our general plan, some of it, and more of it is in our strategic plan. I mean, we, I was really glad we were a part of it, you know, we gave them, I, we shared ideas, we looked at a lot of different things, but ultimately, it is their plan. We're not gonna jump in and say, "Oh, the town wants you to do this, this, and this." That would not be, I mean, it's their plan, and so we support it, we help it, but it is ultimately theirs.
Yeah, Marx did ask, like, for, you know, yeah, our opinion, like, what we would want, and it was, and the kind of the answer, the short answer is, like, Linda's saying, it's in our strategic plan is what we want, like, so it'll be interesting to see. I mean, I'm not, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to necessarily, I think, answer Marx's question without, like, being in that conversation kind of at the time, and seeing, you know, on that third meeting, maybe that point. What do you think, Jen?
I think it's important to incorporate what the town of Bluff would like to see a water agency look like for the future, in order to develop it in a way that is something. 'Cause, I mean, quite honestly, I can't see anyone on this board specifically running a town water system. So what, you know, I mean, I, I think it's important to think about, what do we want a future town water system to look like? Do we want it to be a tax-based entity? Do we want it to be an enterprise fund? Do we want it to be, you know, just, just what is it that, that the town's vision of a future water system looks like? Because that kind of really drives what the strategic plan needs to look, look like in the future. You know, if we have it as a tax-based entity, can we afford it? Does that take, does that take tax funds from our budget to funnel into a different budget? And, you know, I mean, I think these are all important things to consider when, when we're trying to... And, you know, I mean, I think these are all important things to consider when, when we're trying to figure out what the, what the water system of the future looks like. So I think it's important that we do have a, you know, an inkling of an idea of what it is that we want to structure, structure the system to look like in the future. So I think that's an important question to, for us to be thinking about and discussing as well.
I mean, where I think we're gonna, where, where we're going to be held up is up waiting for, well, so like the meeting, the third meeting, like, you know, we're supposed to be getting into researching how other small towns manage culinary and secondary waterways. And like that point's when we're getting into it. So like, I guess that's what I'm saying is like, I totally, I agree, like, I, like, like what, how little of an inkling do we need to give them? Because like without knowing some of this stuff that, you know, I don't know even what to say. Like other than like, I would like us to have the, the water rights and have like everything under town management. Like, that's kind of what I want, but that's all I know.
I would say, I mean, not to be too blunt, but also now is the time. So when we went through our strategic planning exercise, and, and not to say strategic plans can't change, like clearly with more information, with more input, like these are not concrete, but they're also not meant to just sit on the shelf and collect dust. We've said that from day one. But to be completely frank with you, under goal two of organized organizational effectiveness in our strategic plan, which is up on the website, for everyone to go look at, objective three very clearly states, create a water department. Collaborate with Bluff Water Works to develop a transition plan to bring bluff, to bring water operations under the town of Bluff. It has short-term actions and it has long-term actions. We said when we put it together that clearly like those timelines might be fluid based on resource availability, but it does talk very specific, I mean, that, that is the goal, point, point blank. As you all have indicated, like clearly this was a town governmental strategic plan. Bluff Water Works is going through their strategic plan. But if there, if you as a town government determine that that is no longer the plan, I think we need to reevaluate what our plan is, because that was a very, I mean, it's just, it's very specific. That is the intention of the town. And again, that is going to be on page thirteen, um, which is under goal two, and this is objective number three. Now, we do reference water throughout the plan. We reference, you know, the importance of protecting it, uh, clean water and everything like that. But very clearly, when we're talking about developing the town's organizational capabilities, this is a big one. Now, right above that is also, um, develop roads department. And above that is create a defined organizational structure to build these operational capacities. And I'm not saying any of this would happen overnight, um, but that certainly was in our five to seven-year plan. And so, you know, I, I don't want to beat around the bush and say, no Bluff Water Works, like, we want to hear from you. I want to say, the town, we paid thirty-two thousand dollars to write a strategic plan, and this was, was a large element when we thought about how we're going to structure our town government. So take that with what, you know, with, with what it is. But I think it is important to ensure that if people have questions or, you know, they're looking at this in, on page thirteen and say, well, I got some holes to poke in this, then awesome, we should poke some holes. But I don't want to mince words and say, yeah, Bluff Water Works, like, go do what you're going to do. We're going to do what are, we're going to do, because clearly we're going to have to talk and figure it out.
And I, I have a question just about the meeting itself. I'm hoping to be able to just be there, but I was not this time. And I'm wondering, did you go, Erin?
No.
No? Okay. And then when you said everybody was there, was it like the whole water board except Brand? Okay. And then there were the two towns. And then, um, my other question is, is, did I miss the minutes or are there minutes being produced from the strategic plan or did Gary send them out?
I think that Melanie is working on putting minutes together.
Does Melanie?
No, Melanie France, sorry. Melanie France is working.
There are too many bookkeeping Melanys in this town.
Yes, I believe that Melanie France is working on putting the minutes out for that, because this is Gary's operating, Gary Lindgren's needs quality, QED, I can't remember. They are, they are, they are the entity that will be releasing minutes, I believe.
And it was like on our website, I know we posted as a meeting, so then do we put the recording on?
I don't know that there was a recording taken. I certainly didn't.
Well, I think that's one of the things that, that kind of gets held up to answer your question, Lou. I didn't put it on as a notice that we were holding a meeting. The notice on Utah Public Notice website says that we may be in attendance, but we are not taking any action. We're not holding a meeting. So we don't have to post.
Even though there's three at that meeting on that strategic plan?
That's correct. Participating, not holding a meeting.
Yeah. As long as you're not making town of Bluff decisions or talking about town of Bluff.
Which is where I would caution the three of you going and answering that question that was asked by Marx. That once you begin making decisions for the town and saying, yes, this is what the town wants.
Well, I did, I did answer him. I, I told, I mean, I said, the strategic plan is what we were going to do.
That was the appropriate, that's an appropriate response. But I'm saying like.
Taking a vote.
No, or saying that the town supports BWW creating a water district of its own and moving out away from the town. Until there's a discussion that radically changes why we incorporated or what we talked about in our strategic plan, to be taking an alternative position would be really getting us into a little bit of trouble, um, I, I think, with the public notice piece of it. I'm a little, I guess I'm not really surprised. I really would think that recording these would be important because BWW was there with the quorum making decisions about BWW. So I'm a little surprised.
Don't know that BWW, there, there weren't any motions or, or anything.
But there doesn't need to be. There needs to be a quorum.
But see, we have a quorum, too. That's where I'm wondering, is it just completely separate little planning that Gary's doing? And they're all, they're attending and we're attending and it's, but nothing's being decided?
You're, okay. It gets really picky, but we don't have to do anything further. I'm just expressing my surprise that it's not being recorded. So.
Since it's their strategic plan.
I don't want to try to sort out right and wrong and what policies. I'm just, I'm expressing my opinion.
Yeah, I was just hoping that I could listen to it somewhere, so.
And so let's clarify the date, because the date had, the next one was November fourteenth.
Well, I think that's been.
That's changed.
Modified, yes.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, the twenty-first is, was the next one.
I feel like the time was different.
I have it as ten-thirty to two-thirty on the twenty-first of November.
Ten-thirty to two-thirty?
That's what I had is very well.
See, and then I think that Melissa texted back at the end that said she couldn't be there that day, and somebody else couldn't as well. So I have it as the twenty-second from two to six again. So, so I think that maybe that has not been, I think that we were waiting to hear from different entities as to who everyone could attend. So I think it's kind of a stage, and Gary will send out and what he announces to the next. I think we kind of agreed that the Tuesday, is that a Tuesday? Yeah. And.
The twenty-second?
No, wait, sorry.
That's a Friday.
Thursday.
Thursday. It was the twenty-first.
It was a Thursday, the twenty-first, but the twenty-second is a Friday.
Right. No, I was looking at October.
And then that'd be it.
So the twenty-first from two to, two to six maybe was, was the change that was made. Because Melanie, or because Melissa couldn't attend from, from ten to, ten to two.
In our defense, that was at the end of a four-hour.
Yeah, yeah, it was very last minute, you know, texting, trying to find out when everybody didn't work in their schedule.
Get it clarified for our next meeting. And I'll post as usual on, so that we all want to attend. I couldn't attend either, so I would like to go to the next, too. All right. Anything further on that?
Are you planning them to all be at the Desert Rose?
I don't know, but I, yeah. I think, I think that was another factor in why the ten wouldn't work, though, is because the Desert Rose couldn't accommodate that because they do breakfast at night.
We just kind of belong for the ride in a lot of ways, so.
I think it was too big to have in the library.
But we have done a lot. Marx was at that strategic plan. You were there, there were a lot of people there, so that's kind of already nailed down. So just reiterate what we've already said, and you'll be out of trouble and be moving forward.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, what I had said about, about the trying to decide whether it's a tax-based entity or a, you know, remains an enterprise entity, that has a lot to do, Marx brought up some really good points. I thought about liabilities and, and things like that, but it's just something to consider.
So that was my other question is, do we need like a work session to discuss some of this stuff so they're more prepared to?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I felt, I mean, the whole time I sat with this, I felt like they were, like we were fine, mostly them talking and asking.
But like those kind of questions of how we.
I think maybe in the future that might be, you know, I think it might be a beneficial thing for us maybe to, to consider a work session on. But I don't think we need one before the next meeting.
Anything else? Okay. Number three, update on the water service line inventory. I've been texting with Marx because I'm confused. I received an email from Devin Shields at Sunrise last week, and he said, the Sunrise wish of Marx to get the service line inventory prepared and successfully submitted prior to the deadline, which was October sixteenth. D W, Division of Drinking Water, approved the inventory Monday, October fourteenth. So I sent an email to Marx Powell and asked if we could get a copy. And I didn't hear anything back, so I, when I dropped off something at Quinn Rock's Trading Post, I asked Steve Simpson if he'd received a copy of it, could I get a copy? And he said he didn't have a, but he thought. I don't recall if he said he thought Mark said it or not. He said he didn't have a copy to talk to Marx. So I texted Marx this afternoon, and that's what I was checking, so that I'm going to read this since it's got to be part of the record. I will read what I read during this meeting. I said, um, I said to him, I sent you an email a few days ago, and I get a copy of the water line survey that Sunrise did. His response during this meeting, they haven't sent us anything yet. They are supposed to be putting together a report that is supposed to be passed out to the public. We'll pass it along when we get it. The findings were satisfactory. And so then I pulled up Devin's email to just double check, and I said, I may be confused. Sunrise said, the inventory in quotes was approved by D W on ten-fourteenth. And then Marx is responding, it was approved and we are supposed to have the report and the reports would be, that are supposed to be passed on. We haven't received that yet. So that's a later meeting agenda, because they don't have that actual report. But thanks to D W and Sunrise for getting that done. So moving to number four, update and report on design review committees meeting Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
So it was a, uh, very short meeting, all things considered. We went over, um, we obviously were not able to move forward in any of the meaningful ways. But we discussed, um, and Jim and Malia, please help me remember where we landed on this. We and Erin, uh, we discussed the tree trimming and the, um, and what did you make? What was the suggestion you made to come out of the joint account or not? And I can't remember.
I said it's generalized maintenance, so they should just, they should just be billed as we bill them for any utility. But it is not redevelopment, so I don't think it's an appropriate expense for the joint account.
I was under the impression that we had voted in prior DRC meeting to already approve the tree trimming and that the town of Bluff had already approved it and that the, the NABCA board had already approved it. And I don't understand why, because we just delayed this until fall rather than spring. I don't understand why this is being brought up for discussion again.
So what I have told Malia Collins, that, that it can be a agenda item on Thursday. And if Janet comes, Janet Bowman, she comes back with her board, she needs to confer with her entire board again. The response from me as the mayor is, that is, uh, that is a response. The town is making the decision to get the trees trimmed now, period, end of discussion. We're moving forward because that was my recollection as well. But then at the DRC, it came to us, the one thing that I differ a little bit on memory is at one point Janet said, trees are everything like water, but I need to talk to the board. But then I was of the impression after that in a later meeting that she said the tree trimming was fine. But this needs to be done. It's maintenance. It cannot wait another year. So we're going forward with it, with or without a specific other okay. Is there anybody who disagrees with moving forward? Because I think we were all in favor.
We have trees that are falling on fences. We have, you know, I mean, there needs to be maintenance done on those trees over there.
Did anything else come out of the DRC other than the trees?
No, I did remind them that they have a past due invoice and they would be receiving Q3's invoice. But that we expected payment on utilities. And to let us know if they had any questions. Uh, no, and it was just Janet in attendance. Uh, there was no board chair in attendance at that meeting.
No board member?
No board members.
And then there's one, yes, Malia.
We did record it. Can I keep the question?
We should probably start a new, uh, section on our website and then, um, however we're storing things on the computer.
Put under committees, other committees section?
There is a DRC, or sorry, there's a town committee, boards and committees tab, and we've been posting minutes. Probably a little bit of an update on that. Um, so it can just go in the same area.
That was it.
Yeah, I think, and there's a DRC meeting this Thursday.
At one P M. And we'll make sure that the, we, however you want to do that. So we had not been posting the link to that publicly, but we were saying that we would share a minute, or share the minutes. And now the audio, is that still appropriate?
I think it is. So moving to number six, new business report on tax revenue for August twenty-twenty-four. And it's Melanie can report on that.
Um, I sent an email out late last week, exactly, an email.
Yes.
And I'm a little confused about what's being asked of the agenda item. Because I did share that. I thought this was going to be like a, like a talking about what you guys wanted the revenue report to look like. Because that, you know, was shared with everyone, and I mean, I can, I can eat off what I sent.
That's, that's all I'm expecting, is that you just share the numbers.
The resort revenue tax and TRT.
Okay, so for, and this is for revenues that came from August. The resort revenue tax, we had fifteen thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. The TRT, we received seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. For sales tax, we received ten thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. And for the highway tax revenue, we received nine hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Great. Any questions from anyone about the numbers?
I had just suggested, I think at another meeting, too, that, that it would be really helpful to me to see what they were last year, um, just to see, you know, like, are we gaining tax income? Are we losing tax income? You know, because this, it's nice that we got it, but it doesn't really tell us much. You can see the comparison with the resort tax compared to the TRT and whatnot, but that was my only comment.
That's also Q3, correct?
August.
Maybe in the third quarter.
Yeah.
So Polaris is, is open for view only to all of us. So you can go in and look at what the past year looks like.
Yeah, I was just hoping like a little, you know, if there, if it. Yeah, I was just hoping like a little, you know, if there, if it would make a little graph or something would be super great because then you can see growth in the town and stuff for over like, I mean, years. If there's, if there's something in Polaris that you could plug that into, there may not be.
Polaris has a hard time doing that kind of reporting, but I think as we continue to evaluate our organizational structure, this is something that I want to bring up in our staff meeting, is like for Melanie as, and I've, I've been mulling this over a lot. Like Melanie is bookkeeper since there's so much that she's taking off of folks' plate. Malia as project manager and doing all of the stuff for the facilities, that we can kind of start reorganizing responsibilities to where like reporting might come to my seat. But Melanie is like supplementing the, you know, the, the basic information. And so I think for Melanie to get her comfortable in her role for like our bare minimum, not bare minimum, but like with the necessary stuff that needs to take place, I want to get her to do that first. And then we can evaluate whether, yeah, that's something that we add to her plate where it comes to mine as the town manager or something to that effect. But I agree with you, Lillian. I think it's important to, for us to understand. And that way, when it comes to budgeting season, we all have a better understanding of tracking where the entire revenues of the town are going and what we might need to trim or could add to potential expenses for the, the coming year.
And to kind of tag on to that, right now we're in a transition period. So there's other things that are being worked out. And we have a, we're going to do a staff meeting on next Friday, this Friday, to start kind of formalizing like how this works. But the other thing is this year, we will need to do in this fiscal year, an amended budget, not the way that we've done it in the past at the end of the fiscal year when we're doing a 20 whatever budget. We're going to end up having to do, I think, an amended budget, yeah, mid fiscal year. And then at that point, people can see comparisons. But we're all able, if you're interested, able to get onto Polaris and do your own looking. I'm just very hesitant right now to be adding more duties to Melanie while she's getting up to speed. It just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and I don't know if it, I mean, I'm not sure that it does us any good other than we know that you've got it. But it doesn't really tell us anything. So maybe even take that off your list, even of something that you have to provide us.
Well, I put it on because I think it's important that the public hear what the taxes are that are coming in. And since we've moved, we're changing the system from where we get the report from Linda with that in it. This was separated out by Melanie so that we could see it. But it's important for the public to know we're just not hiding it now. So give us, give us a few more weeks to work out the process. And we're going to be making.
Yeah, it would just, it's more just, I think, long-term planning and stuff like to see what happened over COVID time. See what happens in the winter, see what happens when there's any sort of thing. You can just kind of see a flow of it. But if it's not possible, it's fine.
Well, it's actually really easy. So I sent everyone a financial review, you know, at the start of each month when, after I did the reconciliation. So you, if you still have that in your email, you can go back to October of 2023.
Well, but yeah, I know we can all find it. I'm not concerned about that.
Well, we can all find it. I don't have that information.
Well, you can go to Polaris and you can, you know.
Exactly.
But it's not like.
To that point, the email stuff, I don't have that stuff.
Then you run it, then you get on the computer and, and his council members can run reports. So council members have access. You don't have access for the things that Melanie does. You know, inputting stuff, but you can run any report. I mean, you can come in and run the financial review for October 2023.
Well, what Bob Springmeyer turns down is a little more what I'm thinking. But anyway, it's fine. It's just that.
When, when we're, when we're looking at strategic plans and policies and procedures and stuff like that. I, I have to tell you all that with, with the next change of, change of hands coming up next year, I'm, I'm a little bit terrified and I don't know if it's in the same boat. But it's kind of like two of our crucial, and Lou, I don't know if you're planning on running again, but we know that we have at least two of the crucial founding members of the board who are not going to be here anymore. And, and for me being one of the person who's left on, it's like I, I need to get up to speed on a lot of stuff. So, so I think that, you know, looking at the handbook, so to speak, or not at all, you know, as to what I need to, because I don't know how to access Polaris. You know, that's not anything that's ever been. Here, here's your, here's your Polaris login information. You know, and here's how we access it. So, so these are all things that need, that, that we need to be working on to bring us all up to speed, to have smooth transitions for the future.
Well, my, my thought was that in December, which tends to be fairly quiet, is to use that work session to be able to say, this is kind of where Melanie's at right now. This is where Malia's at right now. This is where Aaron's at right now. These are the things that Linda and I know we've got to start handing off. And it's not going to be a pretty sight. And Linda and I have been pretty open about it. It's not going to be a pretty sight if one of us drops off somehow between now and the time this stuff is handed off. We've got literally a year to hand off.
Right. Yeah, but like in this situation, like if we wanted to go into Polaris and look at those reports, would we ask Melanie's time, your time, Linda, Aaron?
I can get you the logins.
I mean, we gave, I mean, we gave it to everybody, but that was like five years ago. Well, Jen and Brett, so, you know, if, but if we wanted to, we would come to you. If we wanted to get in there and look at reports.
And I'll show Melanie where they are.
But I mean, like as far as picking up somebody's time.
Okay, so let's do this. Whoever wants to have login information, just let me know and then we'll work to set it up so you can do it. And Aaron and I have talked about making sure that the council, meaning everyone else, is on view only. I don't want to be able to go, I don't look at Polaris. I'll be quite honest. I can get into Polaris. I don't want to look at it. My fear is I will hit a button that will do something or someone's let me have access and I mess something up. I, I have stayed far, far away from Polaris and I, Aaron and I talked about making sure that we all are on view only, that we cannot get in there. So I'll just work with, with Melanie and Aaron and we'll get the information just in the next few days. Let, you know.
I have that. We wrote it down, so.
I think it would also be good, what kind of reports and things like that Polaris generates. I know that in my own using of QuickBooks, there are reports that are more meaningful than other reports are. And if there's a way that we can generate a report that, that is more meaningful than just time, you know, I mean, it's, it's a waste of time to go in there and just sit there and poke around and not be looking at things that can tell you information that's meaningful.
Well, that's, that's the purpose of starting the staff meeting so that we can try to narrow some of these things down. And another piece that, that can be added is, it is my hope that we will have Polaris down here to sit with Melanie for a day to answer some of those questions and do like we did when Polaris came the first time. Anybody on the council who's interested in hearing or asking questions can be there. That person will be in person at the computer and that's certainly something we can do.
That's what I did at the last time. It's just watched, you know, and it's a lot like.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, you know, I can, I can spend all day looking at stupid reports on QuickBooks that will tell me absolutely nothing when somebody's like, oh, just go to this report. It's like, oh, well, how come I didn't know that eight hours ago?
The good news is we all want the same thing. So all of this discussion is helpful and it helps us to.
Yeah, yeah. This is just to find it.
Yeah.
And we have a manager, which really helps in the transition and we have a bookkeeper and stuff. But if we were to lose one of them too, you know, like we all kind of need to know what's.
Well, and that's the point. We haven't had a full staff, staff, so to speak, ever. And we're only six years into being, seven years into being a town. So this expectation that I keep running into from certain people that we should have all this shit together is not reality. Reality is we're building a town. It's a construction project. I'm sure Antonio doesn't oversee a huge construction project and it's done tomorrow.
No, no.
And, and so that's the point of doing some reorganizing, some staff meetings. And, and Linda and myself knowing that we're not running, please don't change your mind. That we're not running. We have projects we have to hand off. Don't, that's, that's the point. That's what we'll do.
Going back a sec, that's what we told D W W, because, you know, staff, and we said, the board members are the staff, because that's where we were. The board member, they were, they are the staff at this point, so. We're, we're transitioning.
Yeah, and, and just, just like in the strategic plan, you know, it's important to have those roles delineated clearly. And, and to know that you can hand it off and say, okay, this is, this is what I'm, this is what I'm supposed to be doing right now. Yeah, you know. So, so, yeah, I, I am, I am excited to, to, you know, it's like to, to have an inkling of what's going on.
Yeah, so if you set something up before Polaris comes, let us know when that would be and if it's covered or not.
Okay, moving to number seven, a report and discussion on the Office of Energy Development block range.
That's six.
Do you want to start and I can supplement or vice versa?
Sure.
Yeah, it's actually six. So my, I have my copy from the original draft, sorry. So this is six, yeah. Malia.
So Aaron and I attended a webinar yesterday morning. There is a new grant that Aaron found and it's through the state of Utah. And it is essentially $1.1 million that they are giving out. And it is basically for a retrofit energy efficiency project. And so Aaron and I were discussing it and municipalities can actually turn in multiple applications for different projects. And so we were contemplating this building as one option and then of course also this CCC. And they are also a Buy America, Build America, Davis Bacon, which are some of the same regulations or things that we're following along with on the EPA grants, so that is nothing new. We are hoping that you guys agree that we should turn in an application for this. It would be a pretty quick turnaround and they are actually due November 15th. We have a quarterly reporting standard. And we are thinking we could potentially go through an insulation and move over the insulation money that we currently have through the EPA if we receive this turn to move that over to HVAC because we have $90,000 in that EPA grant set aside for insulation that we were given. This one, we could turn that one over and put that into HVAC for $90,000 and then have this one to do insulation with.
Which would free up $90,000 on the EPA grant to some other delineation.
So because, so these are federal funds that pass through to the Utah Office of Energy Development. And that office is unable, essentially if we were to receive grant funds, they cannot be coupled with the exact same project that's already receiving federal funding. So for HVAC, for example, it's partially funded through federal funds. We could not apply this as additional federal funds to it. So that's why we would do that shift. And then, so the total dollar amount that they're looking to get to communities is 1.1. They, I have identified that they want to target about 15 different grants. So if we kind of break that down, there, there's no cap on what we can apply for. And there's also no match required, no cash match. If we were to move forward with an application, we would of course indicate that we have other funds. We'll, we'll talk about this in two. So like, of course, for the CCC, we would indicate that like, this is a work in progress. We do have some gaps in funding, so it's great to be able to look at items that we have already identified as energy inefficiencies. The important thing about this grant is that they want to ensure that we have an energy audit done of the building, which the timing is actually superb because Malia was put in touch with someone that is contracting through Rocky Mountain Power. So actually, the timing of this is all just like very fortuitous. But Rocky Mountain Power provides this particular program for free. So we can already say if we do an application, hey, we are on the road, that is being done. But it is a requirement for the grant that it be done, either we pay for it with the grant or we find someone to do it for free. So for that building, it would be covered. So no match. There's no limit to how much we can apply for. So Malia and I had a pretty good conversation in which I said that we could look at it either as we're looking at insulation in general, because that is like kind of a nice number that would fall into what the state is looking to distribute. Or we write a grant that would be, hey, these are the other gaps that we have. We won't complain if you give us some more money, whatever you'd like to fund, but like these are some of our priorities. And so I don't think it ever hurts to say like, hey, this is the total amount of money we still needed for these retrofits to this building. The only issue would be this idea of not marrying it with other federal funds. So definitely a good opportunity there. And then for this building, I was in here during the drill on Friday and all the lights were flickering and I was just losing my mind. And I thought it might be beneficial to do an application for this building to replace all of the rest of our fluorescent lights that are in this building. So we, each project, so they define a project as like a building. So the CCC, however we would write the grant, that would be a project, but you can only submit up one application. Municipalities are certainly able to submit multiple applications and I don't think we would be deemed in turning in one for that and one for this. And we don't have to have all the data behind it because clearly the energy audit would cover that increase. But I think that actually we have a lot of data from the EPA grant that we could move into an application for the CCC to explain why it's so important to get that building specifically insulated. But, you know, if we wanted to do the lights for that building too, we could do something like that. Three years to spend the funds, whatever we don't spend at the end of three years, we don't spend. Hopefully that would not be an issue. As Malia said, it's federal funds. So Davis Bacon, which is more expensive and Buy America, Build America, which is more expensive. I did ask Malia to do a little research as to American-made insulation because that, that's going to be really hard to get our hands on. We would not want to submit a grant for that because it's just going to be more of a headache than, than it's warranted. But overall, I, I think it's a good program. And on the introductory call, there were maybe four, it was maybe four other entities that were on. So I think we would have a pretty good shot at getting at least one of these funded. But our main question for you is, do you want us to approach zero, one, or two of these projects?
I'm going with two.
I would say two as well.
Excellent. Well, we've got a good track record on grants. So Malia and I have already talked about division of having, getting them written and getting them out.
I'm not sure it's a week.
It's a week. It's a team effort.
So Malia, is this grant piece on the D R C agenda to run through?
And just so you all are aware, so we'll put it out early in case we get awarded. Only local governments and counties are eligible to apply for the grant. So this would be another town managed grant. It would benefit the entire building for the CCC. But while of course we want Utah to name its input, they would not be receiving any funds. It would go strictly into materials and labor for the entire building.
Well, I think we've got a consensus and go for it.
We will get them written. Would love to get these in front of you before your work session the second week in November before we do the applications. So that's what we will be striving for.
If we do that, if we, just thinking calendar wise, if, if it's due by the 15th.
These grants are due by the 15th? Yeah, do you have, do we have time?
We wouldn't have time to, we would have to schedule an extra meeting so that we could vote on it.
No, what we do is what we did last month was do a work session combined with a regular, or a special meeting. Yeah, on that. We'll just do.
Yeah, just to, just to vote on it.
So we can vote on it.
Because we can't vote in the work session, so we would have to have a regular meeting after the work session.
Haven't you ever listened to Grant Murray?
Nope, I listened to Ann say we cannot vote in a work session.
No, I, I've already figured that what we do is just do it like we did last month.
Because we would have to vote on it before, we don't have a meeting in between the 15th and the 12th work session.
Perfect.
And the 15th is too soon, I'm assuming.
I think it's too soon. I love writing grants, but.
That does give us a great introduction into my conversation with Rocky Mountain Power, because they do have a Watts Mark program. I was chatting a little bit with Linda about this and she has introduced to it. And essentially, it's an incentive program in order that Rocky Mountain Power essentially has a couple of consultants that they just ask that we introduce to our design team when we decide on them. And they work with the design team and they may give them recommendations during the schematic design, just different phases. And they will actually just give us incentives, give us kickbacks and cash money that we can put back into our pockets. And so I've introduced it to the, the DRC last week and some really good questions came up. Is this a contract? And it is not a contract. It is truly just, we turn in an application, we fill out WBI, and we ask to be included on this program. And whatever we participate in, we receive a certain amount of money back for, or whatever we don't participate in, we don't. And then it's, um, yeah, no harm done, but also pretty positive when we do decide to participate. So if you guys are willing for us to participate in this, I will ask Melanie this week to give that application and add it. Questions on that? I can also send out the application. We looked through it pretty well at the DRC and asked some pretty good questions.
Were you able to find like what those larger numbers would be we could get?
So I think we would actually need to get that energy audit before they can give that to us. So with this next grant, we'll be able to really extract accurate numbers on, on what our total amount that we really be getting back.
I was in, yeah, I was initially very skeptical. And then like with this grant, everything and everything rolling apart, I'm like, oh, the timing is perfect and this actually makes a lot of sense. And if it's not a contract and we're not really paying anything, I don't know why we wouldn't do it, so.
Would they be involved with this retrofit?
We could also sign up with them for that as well. If we're getting an energy audit of going to retrofit here, just another way to increase our tax dollars.
And they can, they can put some input in or?
Yeah, yeah, because that is the benefit. They see a lot of these projects and they see different pieces of equipment that are going in and how they fare and what people's rates are looking like and can give us recommendations on that. I know that we're obviously looking at solar and going to do solar, which does not disqualify us. Because I did ask because if there was a clause in there that said if we no longer go through Rocky Mountain Power, we might want to make, maybe I got that last incentive. And they said as long as we even just keep getting service from them and don't choose to get a battery bank, then we'll still be with Rocky Mountain Power.
Any other questions? Okay, then we can move to number seven, which is other, everybody have an other.
Reminder to vote, we've got the ballot box here, Monday through Friday, eight, sorry, nine to five. Um, we are not a voting location. Bluff, there's nowhere in Bluff that you can vote in person on November 5th. Um, the communities that you can vote in are posted on San Juan County's website. But just as a general notice, this is not an in-person voting. You can still drop off your ballot, but don't assume that box is going to be here until 8:00 P. M. So just as a reminder.
Our closest is.
Monazuma Creek and White Mesa are our closest.
Check your voting status. You check your voting status online easily. Make sure you're still registered. If you're not, you can same day register. So look up what the information you need to bring with you.
And if you're mailing your ballot, it must be postmarked the fourth. It cannot be postmarked, well, it can be postmarked the fifth, it won't come. And don't anybody put an incendiary device in our ballot box.
Just renovated back there. Um, and then Marathon on Saturday. So I thank you, Linda, for sending out notices, but there are going to be just a few road closures. So Saturday, November 2nd, um, just, there's going to be activity in town. Um, and the gentleman from Land and who's helping coordinate will be down Thursday to do like a last walk through. But that is why, or you've been seeing notices, people should be seeing notices, but there will be activity.
That's.
Ben, yeah, Ben will be down tonight.
Do you have the time?
No, he doesn't know his time. It's maybe tomorrow, maybe Thursday. It sounds like Thursday.
And thanks to the Bluff Community Foundation, the Arts Festival was, it was awesome. At every time.
Very fun, yeah. It was very, very fun. And, uh, baseball field got some use this weekend. I don't see anybody in a cast, so I'm assuming.
Not for lack of trying. A lot of us are very sore.
I think pretty much everybody that, that got out there and ran around, they had some sore muscle.
The instant sprint.
I would like to entertain an executive session. If somebody would like to make a motion.
Motion to adjourn and move into executive session.
Moving to an executive session and then adjourn after that with no further discussion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous, it is 5:18. We are moving into executive session. We will adjourn that executive session and not come back. I'm turning off this recorder.